He hasn't told me he's removed.
How long?
Wasn't here.
Shocker.
We have lots of really great questions. Okay. Good afternoon. The Rule Development and Board Workshop February 25th, 2020 is now in session. Pam Roque, please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mrs. Campbell?
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Here.
Ms. McNugel?
Present.
And Mr. Susan.
Please stand. Oh, sorry.
Those are carrying.
Please stand for those ladies.
Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there are two items this afternoon on our workshop agenda. We will begin with the Head Start update. Jane Klein, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Leading and Learning, will be making the introductions.
Good afternoon. Thank you once again for allowing our Head Start Director, Dr. Wendy Smith, to present on updates from Head Start. Dr. Smith.
We have some exciting things that have happened since our last meeting with you. So quickly to review, the Head Start vision mission is up there. And we'll move to our agenda today. We're going to go over our class scores, our Focus Area Two review, and our continuation application. So first of all, our class scores. We have gone over these in detail about the upcoming scores. They finally came in, and I will say, thrilled with them. Still have work to do, absolutely. But when you look at these, I hope you're as excited as we are. The Office of Head Start Federal Class Review is in three different sections. We have emotional support, classroom organization, and instructional support. If you take a look at the very right-hand side up on the screen, you'll see the benchmark scores that we've already discussed with this, the four, the three, and the two. Let's look at the first row with emotional support. The benchmark score is a four. The Office of Head Start lowest 10% for 2018 was the number you see up there is 5.6641. Our 2015 review, that's for our public schools review, the last time we had our class review, we scored 5.9760 in that category, and this year, we got our score back, and in emotional support, we went up to 6.0300. So, great, great news there. Classroom organization, same thing. The benchmark score is three. 2018 score, 5.2803. 2015 score for private public schools was 5.7436, and this year, our classroom organization went up to 5.7867.
Why did you pick 2015?
Because that's the last time that the class came in and did their federal review.
Got it.
And then finally, the instructional support. This is one that we've had conversation about. First of all, you had a question about why the benchmark score is so low that is set by the Office of Head Start, because remember, the scores are out of seven, and their benchmark score is two. But we've discussed that with three- and four-year-olds, it's difficult to provide instruction. So this tour is a benchmark of two, but I want you to look at this. Our lowest 10% for Office of Head Start for 2018 was the 2.3125. That's a national number. 2015 was a 2.75, and this year, we went up to a 3.2533. Thrilled with that instructional support. So kudos to our coaches, kudos to our teachers, and also thanks to you as board members for approving the Head Start advocate who works with the parents, the teachers, with the wraparound services. So we think that's all encompassing. Now, the class scores break down even further into dimensions. So under emotional support, we have the dimensions that are on the left-hand side. Positive climate, negative climate, teacher sensitivity, and regard for student perspective. I want you to take a look at these numbers, because we take this seriously in how we're going to provide professional development, not only for now, but in planning for our 2020, 2021 school year. So for our 2015 scores, we were at 6.02. Our positive climate did drop a bit to 5.96. Negative climate also dropped, but that's a good thing. So our negative climate decreased from 1.1 to 1.08. Teacher sensitivity, as you can see, we went up in that, 5.67 to 5.82. And then finally, regard for student perspective, went up from a 5.31 to a 5.42.
What exactly is teacher sensitivity?
Being sensitive to the needs of the students, whether it is going to be...
I thought there was some complex.
I know. We keep things simple at Head Start. Going to classroom organization, same type of thing. 2015, either of our public school scores were 6.02 for behavior management. We dropped a little bit to 5.82. Productivity went up from 5.92 to 6.12, and instructional learning formats went up from 5.29 to 5.42.
Instructional.
So what does all that mean? Oh, sorry. I forgot one. Instructional support, this is where we went up to over the three average of our score for concept development. We went up from a 2.6 to a 2.82. Quality of feedback, which I'm very proud of, because that's been a focus of ours, for our teachers to interact with our students at ages three and four, to have a two-way conversation and provide them feedback on their learning, or their social, emotional, or just their play, just giving them feedback, talking to the kids. 2.52 up to 3.18. And then language modeling, this is using academic vocabulary. I think I shared that last time and gave you an example about the little stamp on the hand, from 3.13 to 3.76. Now, these are just numbers until we put it into practice and we try to disaggregate it and say, okay, now what next? So our highlights from our class score report, we did have strong gains against the three umbrella or the class domains. In the domain scores, we exceeded the threshold scores, that four, the three, the two that the Office of Head Start gives us. We were above the lowest 25%, as deemed by Office of Head Start, and we raised our 2015 class scores that we received back in 2015. Now, when we go to the dimension scores, eight out of 10 improved. Positive climate and behavior management dropped a little bit. Let me do the math for you. Did it with my calculator earlier. Positive climate dropped six hundredths, or .06, and behavior management dropped two tenths, or .02. So although it's not a significant drop, we use that data to build our instruction for the future. So guess what will be one of the areas of focus for professional development as the next year comes along? It will be behavior management and also the positive climate. Additionally, our class data is used to tier our teachers, put them in tier one, tier two, and tier three, training or learning. It is a requirement for Head Start for all teachers to be in a coaching cycle, and so our coaches go in and provide the coaching cycle to all of our teachers. However, as you and I both know, not all teachers need the same support. So we use the individual teacher class scores to provide them either tier one, tier two, or tier three coaching and support as needed. We will wait for the 2019 cohort scores for the lowest 10%. I kept going over that 2018 lowest 10%. The Office of Head Start, after they complete all the reviews, will give us the lowest 10% for the nation, and we'll compare our scores to that. So we are waiting on that. The next thing we've done is we've completed our Focus Area Two review, which is another good move toward what our responsibilities are this year. The last time we met, we went over the components of the Focus Area Two review, and as you can see, those are the different divisions. Up there, the five, education and child development, program management, fiscal, which is you, family and community engagement, the ERSI, or the eligibility and the recruitment services, and the health services and environmental and health safety. So if we look at all of the individual components... No, not yet. We're going to go to how many classrooms were visited. Now, we don't get to choose these classrooms. They come in and do a random sampling, and they tell us who, what classrooms are going to be visited, what sites, and what teachers. So we were told there were going to be 11 schools visited, 16 classrooms, and 16 teachers were going to be interviewed. So that happened. These were the schools that were chosen. Yams, Palm Bay, Saturn, Kokina, Enterprise, South area Head Start, Endeavor, Jupiter, University Park, Port Malabar, and Discovery. Now, not knowing which schools are going to be visited, all classrooms were prepared and ready. Some teachers even said, "Oh, they didn't come see my classroom, and I was ready." Much rather have that than... Thank goodness, they didn't come. So some of our notable quotes from the visits, from the reviewers. Your family advocates really support your schools and families. They were totally impressed with the involvement that our family advocates have with our community members, that you actually approved their extended time from six and a half hours to eight hours a day and another month, and that was based on Policy Council's suggestion and your approval. So we got accolades on that. Another quote was, "Your teachers work very closely with instructional assistants and principals to meet the Head Start students and families." The reviewers were very impressed that the principals of Head Start sites were actually involved with the Head Start program. That's an added bonus for a Head Start program being under a school system, because if it's in the private sector, they don't have the principals, the assistant principals, the support, the security, all things in that nature, and so they were very impressed with that. And they complimented our teamwork, just every place they visited. Everybody likes everybody. We get along. You help. And so that was nice to hear. So one section was the FA2 Program Management and Fiscal, which actually you, the governing board, was involved in. And thank you to Ms. Belford, and thank you to Ms. Duskovich, because those were the chosen ones to be able to speak to our reviewers. Ms. Belford actually participated in about an hour and a half, two-hour meeting, the very first day of the review as an oversight. We had it at Clear Lake with all the different managers of the departments there, and then they actually had a one-on-one time with the reviewers, with Ms. Duskovich and Ms. Belford. So we had the fiscal review. They did meet with the two board members. Their responses were, "Hey, your district's strategic plans may match our Head Start goals." And we said, "Well, yes." But that was a comment made, so we were happy for that. We also got a specific sample of the data reports, the legal and fiscal oversight. They were so impressed with the board's involvement. Other Head Start doesn't have the share site that we have, the board workshops that we have. So that was some of the things that they said, "Hey, your board, your governing board," which is our school board, "really is involved and knows what's going on with the Head Start program. You mean they do that pre-K through 12?" I said, "Yes." So they were very impressed with that. They also met with three Policy Council members. Now, remember, our Policy Councils are voted on for each of our sites by the parents. So there is one parent, an alternate also, meets with Ms. Barlow once a month to look over all of the Head Start policies, procedures, things that are going well, things that need to be improved. If they find something, we then bring it to you, such as the family advocates. And so they were impressed with our Policy Council members because they saw evidence of us growing leaders in parents. The Policy Council members are knowledgeable about the Head Start program. Then they go back to their meetings at their school and are able to talk with the parents about that, and they're actually growing other parent leaders. So what a great asset to provide kind of public schools, that some of these leaders are being groomed, parent leaders, in three, with children of three and four years old. Like I said before, the creation of the Board SharePoint has improved communication with the governing board, so they targeted that. The family and community engagement, that was the ERSI. They reviewed 82 files. We didn't have choice of how many of the 624 files they would review. They pulled the 84, and this was most impressive to them. The family advocates set family goals with the parents. They observed that of those files, 767 goals were set by families, and 60% have already been met or are making progress toward that goal. So they were extremely impressed with that part of it. The health and health services and environment, health, safety, again, this is where we fall into our security specialists that are an added bonus for our Head Start children. The dental exams, I think we talked a little bit about that before, but they were very impressed that 496 of our students have on file a dental screening or a dental exam. And we continue to work with that, offering dental field trips for children to go to a dentist, receive some cleaning, some fluoride, and we try to teach the parents that dental health is so important to...
Can I say something real quick? Dr. Holmes and I visited, what school were we at? Was it Palm Bay Elementary?
Yes.
Was that in the Head Start classroom there? Anyway, we visited a classroom while we were there, and we asked the children, "What's your favorite thing about your teacher?" And one of them raised their hand and said, "Because she taught me to take care of my teeth. She helps me brush them and take care of them."
And then about eight other hands were up. "Yeah, me too."
Well, that is a requirement. They do have to brush their teeth every day. And that's in the classroom as well.
And he was just so happy that he knew how to take care of them. That was his number one thing that he thinks about his Head Start teachers.
Want to take that back to our...
It was hell, Neil, didn't it?
Yes, very good. Like I said before, during the classroom explorations or the visits to the classrooms, they were very impressed about the active supervision. They saw our security specialists. They saw our SROs. And also, the tap-out procedure was new to them. And what the tap-out procedure is, if you've ever worked with three- and four-year-olds, and you might get a little stressed if you're in there, and you're just having one of those days, you are allowed to tap out, step out for a minute, collect yourself, go to the restroom, walk around the playground.
We need that in board meetings.
Yeah. So if you want to institute the tap-out procedure, Ms. Barlow has everything you need to know about that. But they thought that was amazing, that we were actually allowing adults to say, "You know what? I need some mental health for just a second. I'll be right back." Another quote, "Your program stands out from other Head Start programs for having a high level of support with environmental health and safety and the expertise of the environmental specialists." We have an environmental specialist who does nothing but help us with Head Start, safety, security, cleanliness. Dennis Sullivan is phenomenal, as well as they were impressed with our custodians, even stopping to speak to some of the custodians and saying, "How do you keep these classrooms clean? What does it take on a daily basis?" And so they were very impressed with the custodial staff, as well as our environmental and health specialist. Now, those two are in the past. We are awaiting our scores for our FA2 review. It's 45 days after they leave, and they left the last Friday of Janu-- January, so we are anxiously awaiting those scores. We now have a continuation application. We are in the process of that. That is the last big thing that will have to be done this year, besides planning for, pre-planning for next year. But there are two parts to this. The first one, we are writing our continuation application for year four of five. We are currently finishing year three of five. And what this is, the process to prepare for this application is we have to have a community assessment update. It's finished. Check, we've already completed that. We are in the process of writing the self-assessment and continuous improvement plan. We also have to analyze our progress on program goals and objectives, and if there's any tweaks that need to be made, we put it in the application, and then we develop our training and technical assistance paper. So that is in process now. And the last thing will be, the parts of the continuation application are programs and school readiness goals will have to be reviewed, the rationale for any changes, budget has to be in there with the budget narrative, approval by Policy Council, and then finally, approval by you for us to be able to submit to the regional office. So here's the timeline. Policy Council is meeting March 10th for their approval first. After that, you will receive a packet via courier, just like you did last year, for your review and input. On March 24th, there will be a board agenda item for the continuation application, and then with your approval, we will submit to the regional office by March 30th to meet the deadline of April 1st. Now, before I close, I do want to say a little bragging part. We had two, we had an extra person come to visit us during our review. She happened to be the president of the DLC Corporation, which is the contractor that conducts all the federal reviews for the Office of Head Start. So when we first met her on that Monday, I've never been to a site and gone around. I'm so excited. I'm not from an education background. I just want to come and learn. So she was here with us for four and a half days. She walked around with Ms. Barlow, and then the lead reviewer, who is actually the vice president of the company. She met with me on the Thursday afternoon, and she said, "I have to fly out to Washington, DC to meet with Dr. Bergeron, who is actually the director of, I call it, the Head Start. I'm meeting in Washington, DC today, and I can't wait to tell her about your program. I am blown away what the Office, or what your Head Start program does for the youngest of children. I am just on fire." And she went on and on and on, and I just kind of started getting taller in my seat, and I said, "Well, you know what? Just invite her to come." And I thought, "What did I just say?" "Invite her to come." She said, "You know what? I'm going to do that." So she went to meet with Dr. Bergeron, and she actually emailed Ms. Barlow, and she said, "I did get to speak about your program." And I told her I want her to come, and she said, "I'm going to try to make that happen and get it on my schedule." So if the director of the Office of Head Start, Dr. Bergeron, comes to Bravard County, I will be just thrilled. I would want her to meet you. I would want her to meet Mrs. Klein, Dr. Solomon. I want her to meet everybody, because what Bravard County does to help support the Head Start program is just phenomenal, and I wanted you to know that you were recognized in it, the staff of Head Start, the teachers, the instructional assistants, the family advocates. It all is truly a wraparound service, and I am proud to be a part of it. So with that, I am finished. Thank you. Thank you. You are welcome.
Dr. Smith, I have one question for you before you depart.
Yes, ma'am.
The community assessment update, is that going to be in the binder that we receive via courier, or is that something that you can email to us?
Can we email it off then? Sure. Yes, ma'am. Email and courier, how's that? Either way. So you can be reading it at 2:00 in the morning.
Which is exactly what I do.
I'll make that up. All right. Thank you. Have a great day.
Can we just find our red carpet roll out?
Yes.
What?
Can we find our red carpet roll out?
Classic Wood Flooring provided it for... I don't know. They provided it for...
The AUC Awards.
The AUC Awards, and I'm sure we could get...
Okay, ready?
We are ready.
Okay.
Well, I am very excited today to present to you the results of our student survey. And I want to say first student survey, because it's definitely our first systemic one in a lot of years, but several years ago, we have worked with student data in the past. It's really important to all of us in meeting and learning, student services, anybody that provides academic service, to really make sure our students have a voice. It's one of those things that it's strange you have to be deliberate about, because they are indeed our ultimate stakeholder, but it's really easy to get in solution mode, especially as adults in this field. We can start going in some quick directions without stopping and really understanding some things and how they impact students. We contracted this year with Youth Truth, which is a nonprofit organization dedicated to student and community voice and input in the educational setting. And just a quick little overview on the basics of the results in the surveys, because we are going to just touch a tiny slice of it. I know there's a lot of slides and a lot of data, and that is just the tip of the iceberg. The results come in an electronic platform that allows principals and users to sort and filter in all different ways, which would be impossible to exhaust all those from presentation. So for today, you're going to see aggregate results by elementary school, by middle school, and by high school. Over 42,000 students took the survey, and that represents 82% of the eligible students. So we test, we administered surveys to students in grades three through 12, and that is a huge return rate. The company was actually incredibly impressed with that.
Dr. Solomon, can the schools break it down by classroom, or is it just school-wide?
Excellent question. They can actually break it down by these areas, depending on the grade level. So in elementary school, they can break it down by grade level and by male or female, because again, it's self-selected information, it's entirely anonymous. So you're depending on the student self-reporting, and so they kept it really simple in elementary school. In secondary schools, they added free reduced lunch status, race, ethnicity, your self-reported grades. Are your students who are reporting As scoring differently than your students, reporting that they have Cs, English language learners, and students with IPs? So in each of the surveys, they ask students, question is self-identified. The students receive a ticket basically to take the survey, to ensure that only one survey per student, but it's entirely anonymous. The batch of tickets could be distributed, however. I mean, we think it's important, because this isn't really about this teacher, this classroom, this practice. It's about some of the overall district-wide patterns, especially with results that are this large. That's a really good survey size. In terms of comments, we've got tens of thousands of comments. Every single school got pages and pages of hand-typed comments, and boy, from the mouths of babes. So the comments are incredibly telling, and we've asked our principals to do a preliminary look to see if there was anything actionable. Did the student mention something potentially concerning about themselves, another student, a teacher? And we asked them to just first kind of make sure that we are not keeping confidential information that needs to take action on. And we did have a couple circumstances where the principals did a terrific job. And so again, today, I'm going to show you some general reports, but if I was at a school and at district level, I could say, "Okay, 100% of my students responded, or 75% responded this way, but what about my African-American students? What about my Hispanic students? Is their experience the same?" And we've just seen some really interesting data. In addition to all of the data, the platform includes a comprehensive toolkit within a backpack. So I could click on Synthesize Results and get all kinds of formats and ways to create reports and PowerPoints and data presentations. In Action Planning, I could key in on my school's weakest area and look at research-based strategies on really improving those outcomes for students. And so each of these represent another plethora of information at the fingertips of our administrators. One of the things we really liked about this survey is their response time. We received the complete detailed web interface a week and a half after the students took the survey. They're incredibly responsive, and we think that's important. We think it's important to have live corrections and understanding what's going on with your students. I had a really powerful conversation with a principal the other day, was really disappointed by his results in college and career readiness. And he went through the litany of things that they had done that year, which were great. They were impressive. They were important, but they weren't connecting to the kids. And so it was a really glaring example of, these can all be the right answer, but if it's not the right answer for these children right now, we're not really targeting our student groups. And so how to take that feedback and connect better to how students access information. And so those are the kinds of conversations we hope to have. Our principals are going to an additional training on March 5th. The company facilitators coming in and teaching them how to use this information to improve culture and improve outcomes for your students in your school. And so Jane and I would like to extend the opportunity, if either of you would like to see your specific schools or more specific information, to come and sit with us. It's really comprehensive, and it takes a lot of clicking, but you can see where they rank, and we've given that to our principals. We've said, "Okay, you saw your national norm, but in Bravard Public Schools, you're here and somebody else is here, have those conversations." And not for any negative reason, but sometimes you have to realize, okay, not everybody's students are grouchy, because sometimes it's really easy to dismiss the results, and we want people being responsive to them. And so in our elementary, we had a 90% response rate, and that is incredible, from elementary grades three through six. Going to give you the kind of gist of how we get data. These are the five main categories of the survey, and within each category are a whole series of questions. And of course, through psychometricians, these are valid and reliable questions. So I chose, for the purpose of this slide, to compare our schools, the district aggregate, to suburban schools, because I felt like we were suburban. So this is a national organization. They test all over the country, so we were able to be comparative and pick a criteria. I just picked suburban just because. And so you'll see that these are the suburban median. And so you'll see that these are the suburban median results and we're below the median results there. I could click if this were live electronic and it would shift who we're comparing to. And so let's get into some of the nitty-gritty. And so this slide is identifying a couple of key questions from the engagement categories in elementary school. And you'll see even when they ask the questions, they're very great appropriate. So you'll see the question, "Does your teacher want you to do your best?" Their response choices, "No, not very much." "Somewhat." "Yes, very much." Things that all students can understand. And I'll let you take a look at some of those results there. And again, this is elementary as a whole. And when you looked at the individual schools, you saw dramatic variances in results. We're gonna get that "yes, very often" higher into your coming to class. And again, these are great targets, right? So as a school principal, as a school leader, as district leaders, we want to see that our efforts are improving these responses. If you go into Culture, I'll let you take a look at some of those. And this one I know is crushing the soul of my friend Jane Klein. "Does your class stay busy and not waste time? Do students behave well in your class? Do adults respect people from different backgrounds? Do students in your class..." I'm sorry?
I love that that was so high.
I like that. I felt so too. And again, a school leader or us at the district leader could filter by student demographic. So we could filter by grade level. We could filter by ethnicity. We could filter by a couple of different factors to see how different students respond. In our work, we've seen some vast differences. In the high school level, definitely between ESE students, non-ESE, free reduced lunch, non-free reduced lunch. We have less variables in elementary, of course. Elementary academic rigor. As you can imagine, this is one that we're incredibly interested in. Are students feeling challenged? Are they engaging with meaningful work? I thought you all might enjoy this. "Does your homework help you learn?" question. Does it help you outside of school? Is it interesting? Does it make you think? And again, the principal has at their disposal the questions that come with it. So students were able to respond to quite, to give written feedback in each area. These were some interesting questions as well. I appreciate the way they asked them. "Does your teacher help you correct a mistake?" Right? We know as adults what that might tell us about the learning environment. The students don't necessarily. And you've gotta love that these were some pretty positive responses here. This was one that caused pause. "Does your teacher ask if you understand what you're learning?" And then again, in some schools, in some environments, that was a much bigger negative, but also some positive affirmations as well. Relationships. I know this is...
Did you try to show that one?
I did. Sorry, I couldn't show all positives. So in relationships, a lot of questions, you know, kids, "Do the teachers fair?" Actually, Ms. Deschamis and I just had a conversation about kids care about, "Is it fair? And does my teacher like me?" Those are things that stem down. "Does your teacher care about you?" 81%, "Yes, very much." 70%, "Yes, very much." "Do you like the way your teacher treats you when you need help?" That's a good one, right? Because sometimes kids are really... Kids are feeling really uncertain about asking for help. "Does your teacher treat you with respect? Does your teacher ask you about your life at home?" That's powerful information, right? That's powerful information. Because clearly, these students feel positive about their teacher. And that's what makes this information interesting. If all similar cells had just kids with kind of a grouchy visceral response, you wouldn't see the variation. So it really lends a lot of credence to looking at, "Do they ask about your life at home?"
Dr. Solomon, in some regards, it's not always just the teacher, right, that asks the student what's going on. Some may be part of that anomaly because I think we have some great teachers that do engage their kids. Maybe one of the anomalies is that there's other people at that school that also ask them what's going on at home. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, and I would never make judgments as an aggregate result. I think what the pause we have to give is that the kids responded this way and not that they're invalid, but maybe how we're connecting could be more explicit. Right? And so I think our teachers are phenomenal. This isn't a reflection of poor teaching, rather students' perceptions, right? The students are not perceiving this and that's something that we have to take valid.
Sure, I understand.
This is a slide that covers bullying. And so again, a lot of really nice, specific questions. Starting with, "Has anyone bullied you at your school in the last year?" Well, in the elementary schools, 33% said yes, right? And so within those 33% that said yes, these were clarifying questions about the bullying. This was interesting to me and I didn't expect to see this. The how you were bullied, the verbally being the primary. And I think sometimes as educators, we're more keyed into the bigger event-type bullying things, but the verbal comments are by far the most common. You'll see in high school, the electronically gets higher, but by and large verbally across all three was most significant. And this was interesting too because it was different in elementary, middle, and high school. You see the largest response on sex or gender, how they look, disabilities that they have. When you read the comments, I was really surprised to see how many students commented about their appearance. You know, would you say the same thing? That really, that hurt me. And I think it's really important for us to see that information, to realize how sensitive students are about their appearance and how those comments can emotionally shut them down from the learning environment if we don't try to attend to that. That was a surprise to me. I didn't expect to see that there. And then down to here, "Did you tell someone? Did you tell a grown-up at home, at school, a friend, or a classmate?" Only 11% did not tell anyone. And I think that is good to see that it clearly shows that they feel comfortable talking about it. School safety. This was a category we chose to add. It wasn't one of the included categories, but given school safety is so important right now, we thought it was really important. Let you take a look at those and you can see the big surprise here is the bathrooms. And that was a surprise to me in elementary. I would not surprise to see that in middle school and high school.
Why is it not a surprise?
Because the gang bathrooms.
The what?
The gang bathrooms, the large bathroom.
They're not not gang like gang. But like, it's called a gang bathroom when they have multiple stalls. That's actually a technical term.
Never heard that.
So when they're, they go for lunch, they go in there and you know, teacher's outside the door or...
Well, and supervision, obviously, in a restroom for obvious reasons is less robust. But the fact that this many more students responded that way to me again is pause. And a important thing for our school principals, our leaders to recognize.
I was just gonna say that, you know, one of the things that Sue and her team were working on at Endeavor because they don't have bathrooms in classrooms in that project, that ties right to that. And then I was gonna share, when talking to one of my principals, she said, "You know, I really didn't think about the Youth Truth and why we were doing it with elementary." And she said, "Then I thought, we listen to teachers and how they feel about teaching and learning. We listen to our parents, but we don't listen to the people we serve most directly, and that's our students. And the student voice is so powerful." That's it, exactly.
Yeah, and again, at no point do we want to key into specific teachers or specific classrooms. Just being responsive to the patterns of how our students are feeling, we think is really important for school leaders. Moving on to middle. I held my brand for middle school, just so you know. And the comments were quite telling in middle school, exactly as you would expect. Again, I gave some comparisons by suburban schools just to see where we ranked percent-wise. I should say, we ventured into a three-year contract, so they will nest results each year. And so next year, we'll see two years' worth of data and so on. And again, we have primarily the same categories except belonging and peer collaboration, which as you can imagine, is an important indicator for a middle school student. And unique in our middle school is it's just seventh and eighth. Nationally, they include sixth grade in it. We chose to keep the sixth grade at the elementary ones since they're in the same site and just to keep the continuity on it. So I'd like to say ours are the grouchy or two years of middle school. And again, they added range on the middle school and high schools so there's more range in responses on a typical Likert scale. And I'll let you take a look at those. Actually, they were pretty, they were pretty positive as far as I was concerned from middle school students.
8% enjoyed that in school.
Strongly agree. But 28% agree. 28% agree. Again, a lot of information to really help the school leader identify some issues that they might be having in their school culture.
We do have a lot of comments for middle school because if you look at these, it's a lot of neither, degree, disagree.
Lots and lots and lots.
87% participation.
Yeah, but 30, around 30%, neither agree or disagree, which means to me they were like...
Which is like middle school, like, right? Like, ah, you know. But yeah, we had a lot of comments. I would say one of our heavy comment groups. And they would write paragraphs sometimes. And so not just a couple of words. I mean, they would sometimes take the opportunity to, "I heard about the chicken again in the cafeteria." But they really were really reflective on teachers that were like positive, supportive, what works for them. And patterns were clearly, clearly existed. One of the things that was really evident across all three batches was their frustration about misconduct in the classroom. And their frustration with other kids who are disrespectful to their teachers and disrespectful to the environment. And that came across in many of the comments throughout the different surveys. When we look at academic rigor, let you take a look at some of those questions slightly different than in the elementary. As you can imagine, and some of these I would have really liked, a higher connection on assignments that really helped me learn. Most of my teachers want us to use our thinking skills and then preparation into high school questions as well on this survey. And then into relationships in middle school. And this is what I think Mr. Susan was getting at. This question wasn't on the elementary one. At my school, there's at least one adult willing to help me, right?
Sometimes when I was teaching, we'd have somebody that had a really good connection with a kid.
Oh, yeah.
So we would get our information from that person and that person might not be a teacher.
And you can see, this is about an 80% response rate, which if I'm a principal, I'm going after this, right? And when I say I'm going after this, this is gonna be an explicit goal. And set a goal on how we can make sure every student feels comfortable with at least one adult, especially when they have seven teachers, right? So these students have seven teachers. They have a guidance counselor. Many of our middle schools have a social worker. They have administrators. And so this is a number that even though about 80% is high, you would want, I would want higher, to feel that all of my students at least felt comfortable with someone. This is similar to the other question that connects what you're learning in class with your life outside of school. And as you can imagine, a pretty low approval rate there. And I liked this question as well. "How many of your teachers are not just satisfied if you pass? They care if you're really learning." I thought that was a pretty telling question. And again, I sampled a few questions from each category. There's a couple more that weren't represented. They weren't as interesting for this purpose. Middle school culture. So to the point that I just mentioned, take a look at the second one. "Most students in this school treat adults with respect." That gives you some pause, doesn't it? But again, when you see things like that, again, I like an obvious problem. An obvious problem means I can provide a targeted solution. I can really work on that issue. And when their scores in general don't match this response rate, it makes me take that they really feel this way, right? Because it wasn't just that they Christmas treated. It gives me information that I think is valuable. And even though these are low, this 20% at strongly disagree is even more powerful to me. Conversely and pleasantly, they have significantly higher on adults treating students with respect at this school, kind of the flip on it. Discipline in this school is fair. And adults in my school respect people from different backgrounds. Again, you see a really high affirmative response here. And again, that's the students themselves recognizing the adults, really valuing diversity amongst themselves. This one had another interesting question on it. Outside of school, in parent clubs, sports teams, religious groups, and other groups. 74% response rate there. Students self-reporting that.
Dr. Solomon, is this a specific school we're looking at or is it the aggregate bar?
Average. This is all middle school. And then I thought this was a pretty neat question. Again, students were able to select, sometimes multiple times, "Do the following make it hard for you to do your best in school?" And again, as a school leader, I need to know that. What are the barriers to my student's success and look at the barrier? I'm just gonna let you take a look at it because it's gonna hit you in the gut. That's a hard one, to see kids identify that as their single biggest barrier to success in school.
And that kind of relates back to the one question, even though it was elementary. "Does my teacher ask me about my home life?" I mean, so it all kind of ties together.
And this is their biggest barrier.
Yep.
Right? Some of the patterns that did not reveal in aggregate results when you look at disaggregated data. When you look at students living in poverty, students of different races, the differences are even more dramatic. But again, so then how, we're working really hard to mitigate some of these other issues that impede academic progress. How do we really connect with the family in the home when these students are identifying that as their most significant barrier to success? And I don't have an answer, but I know knowing that the question is important is the first step. Us seeing this number and knowing that that's the first step of student response.
Well, and just, you know, so much of that we can't really do anything about, but the awareness.
But I would argue that we can. We can do more in school. We can do more opening our libraries earlier and later, right? We can do things that are habits of instruction that don't reward the child whose parent will go out and buy these things. We're really rewarding academic intent, right? So there are things that we can do that can help these things. We can make sure with our business partners, like they do at Cambridge and Endeavor, every kid has this basic school supply. We don't ask them for anything else. We make sure that the intellectual thinking is what we value, not the outside. So we provide multiple opportunities for students within our school day to really engage in their content. So I think there's solutions. We just have to think about it a little differently.
But it's such a vague question. I guess, I mean, it could be that their parents are going through a divorce. It could be, you know, it could be a sick relative at home.
Absolutely. But it's a pretty big pattern, right? That's a pretty big pattern to say, "My home life makes it hard for me to do my best in school."
And I guess they could pick more than one.
For sure. Yeah.
And at the same time, I do think, you know, there's probably special orders and counselors that really do connect with some of these kids that they know. But also, a teacher does so much anyhow. And so many of our teachers do know exactly what is going on with these students. So I think that connection, even if somebody, if a teacher acknowledges, "Oh, you have to stay up late because you're watching your brother and sister." I mean, some of the things I've talked to when somebody says, "Oh, you know, my parent was smoking crack last night, so I couldn't really sleep." I mean...
Well, and again, at a school level, we can disaggregate. I can look at by grade levels, by patterns, by different indicators that we have. And the important is the awareness that if you had asked most of us, "What would the student say was the number one reason they're not being successful in school?", I would have guessed that. And so I think it just helps... And so I think it just helps keep an awareness as we develop strategies that improve school culture.
Look at the one, just one more second. My family responsibilities and my home life. And I think those two are very telling right there for some of our kids.
Yeah. And again, by school, it's really different. So you see different patterns by school as well. Belonging and peer collaboration for our middle school students. Interestingly enough, the affirmative yes on bullying lowers as the grade levels increase. So I was surprised to see middle schoolers with a yes lower rate than elementary school students. But again, you'll see the same interesting responses. Again, verbally is primarily the highest response rate. But look at this right here, how I look again, right? So I think it's really important again for our educators to keep that in mind because we really don't think that way. And some of the most heartbreaking comments we read about students reflecting on their own appearance and how they felt that that was the cause of the problems that they had. And, you know, to me, you know, you rally around your school team to talk about, how can we just really combat that when we would never, I don't think in our age bracket, really think we have to identify the targeting over how a student looks and how they value their appearance. But it is very real and it came out really loud in the comments. I feel part of my school's community. You know, this is one that as a principal is going to be near, dear to your heart. Really wanting your students to feel part of the school community. I've mentioned a couple of times, by school, you will be surprised at what you think the school rankings are, where we have our high sense of belonging, our high sense of respect for teachers. It's not socio-economically driven. It really is in fact converse to that. And Lena and I have lived, breathed and died this data. Good schools create in those environments and it's not necessarily related to those external factors. On school safety, let you take a look at the middle school data there. Hallways, bathrooms and locker rooms take the lead. I strongly disagree again. But I have to say, I felt positive in my school, there are clear rules against hurting people. This is a 73% affirmative response. Adults at my school try to stop bullying and harassment. One of the ones I left off here was feeling safe in the home. And that had some surprisingly concerning patterns as well when you disaggregated the data. Moving on to high school, we had a 78% response rate, which I think is pretty awesome considering dual enrollment, early admissions and all the things that happen in high school. Really proud of our teachers for putting up, our teachers and our schools for putting a high priority rate. This one, we actually had a Florida schools comparative, so I went ahead and put that in. And again, I could have chosen anything of which to compare the results to in those medians. And you'll notice right away, we're going to get into some college and career readiness indicators, which again, give us a little pause. So school engagement. I enjoy coming to school. What I learn in class helps me outside. My teachers' expectations make me want to do my best.
That's a gut approach.
Dropping out. This one was a shocker for me, especially at the schools that you would not guess, right? So the question is, have you ever seriously considered dropping out of high school? And a yes was 22%. Think about the fact that we have about 22, 23,000 students in our high schools. 22% is a pretty big number. And so this is really interesting information for me. Again, it varied by school. This is district wide. But this is the bottom line. I'd fallen behind and felt like I couldn't catch up. And so how do we work through those issues when we know from a practical level, of course, you can catch up. We can do this, we can do that, we can do this. But that cements hard in the students. It's a really difficult thing to overcome when a student is just anticipating that this is too high of a mountain to climb.
Well, that partnered with one, with the one to above that.
And that's the one that jumps out at me.
Yeah, I was discouraged by an adult at school. And in some of our places, when they're looking at this data, that'll become the highest. And then again, that's really powerful telling information when you're targeting school culture. Relatively low is relevance and safety, right? Those are relatively low on the reasons for considering not staying in school. This one, of course, is Florida. I was interested in this one and did a national comparison. And this blows away everybody else as a high reason, the standardized assessment issues. Looking on to academic rigor. I love this question. Don't necessarily love the patterns of responses, but most of my teachers don't let people give up when the work gets hard. And so a lot of times when I'm looking at giant data sets, I'll pick a couple of questions to target year after year after year because I think they're telling. That to me is a telling one. No, my teacher is making us work through the challenging stuff, the difficult information. In most of my classes, we learn a lot almost every day. I guess I'm just going to be thankful for my 11% strongly agree.
Especially because they already give them the out of most and a lot almost.
Yeah.
You have to hit all three of those together.
That's what I said. I'm going to take my 11% to strongly agree. Like, that's pretty good. I'm not going to complain about that one. High school relationships. Let you take a look at this. Understanding your life outside of school. Your teachers' fear. Care if you're really learning. I was really pleasantly surprised here. How many of your teachers are willing to give you extra help on schoolwork if you need it? 26% said all. That's pretty good. That's a real, to say all of my teachers will give me extra help if I need it. And then a pretty significant chunk of a moderate amount. Onto school culture. Again, same pattern. Students treating adults with respect. The students are frustrated by the other students and their lack of respect for adults in the school. Conversely, an opposite on most adults in the school treat students with respect. Of course, I would, in my dreamland, plan these all be hundreds, but student perception is okay. Discipline in the school is fair. This was a big one. So all of a sudden, these same students who were pretty passively in the middle were really strongly about feeling that discipline is fair. Lots of comments on the survey around that. And adults in my school respect people from different backgrounds. So we've now seen in elementary and high and middle, this is a really high response rate, that they really do feel like the adults in their schools respect student differences. And that's a really positive outcome. Similar question. Do any of the following make it hard for you to do your best in school? Now let you take a look. These are high school kids. But no, crime and violence outside of school.
That one blows my mind.
Look at the difference in school and outside of school.
And yet that one was rated low on our middle schoolers.
Yeah. So how do we connect? I believe we have a lot of growth in our district in working with nonprofits, working with social groups that can work with students and come in between, you know, different types of resources. This is, this is tough. 60% of students said that. The other one, extracurricular commitments. I'm not surprised that one was like, that that gets in the way.
How come home life wasn't on this one like middle school?
They might be able to escape it.
They worded it differently. Yeah, I don't think it was on. I don't think I ignored it. I didn't put 100% of the questions, just the bulk of them. High school belonging and peer collaboration. So now we see the lowest percentage yet on being bullied, 17% there. Verbally still wins, but electronically jumps up a little bit on that one. Once again, why do you think you're bullied or harassed?
How I look.
I don't know that, that's not something we've hit upon. It really stands out to me as something we have to think about and talk about. The next highest, people thinking that a student is gay, whether they are or not, how much money my family has, race or skin color, on and on. Similar to the middle school one, I really feel like part of my school's community. This is this chunk here, if you can't tell, that is on the affirmative. This is the negative. That's the neutral. Oh, college and career readiness. So I was really particularly interested in this because we've done a lot of work in our division around it. We did student interviews. We've done student panels. We have gotten student feedback in multiple ways. And again, our principals have tried, but were really not succeeding too terribly well. And a lot of student comments at the high school level on their lack of feeling ready and prepared. I'll let you take a quick look at those. These 18% strongly disagrees there. And really this whole cluster here and really this too.
When you, when you have the comparisons to like the national data, you could take like this question and compare it. So is this normal among high schoolers around here?
Or worse.
Or worse, okay.
Yeah. Now you will see a budget proposal that might help with that, but just, you know, shameless pause.
With that, honestly, this data, when I have met with high school students, whether it's on the home base, the advisory board, all of them like...
No surprise.
We need help getting ready for the SAT. We need to help finding scholarships. We need to help, you know, knowing what the next steps are.
We are, we are trying. We have recommended a really creative solution that's really low budget and really small, but it's a small thing that we think we can get a lot of bang from. We're also, I'm also in discussions with Eastern Florida on some ideas that I think will help as well. So we're going to keep that work going, but it matches everything we've seen. We did student interviews, it matches it. We've done a couple other things of getting student voice and it all lines up. And so some interesting information here. So 60% of students report that school support services have helped them meet graduation requirements. So there's a couple other questions in different areas. They feel like meeting the graduation requirement goes well. Well, here's some other questions. So use of school support for future goals. Counseling about college finance, relatively low. How to apply for college, college admissions, future career, exam prep. This one, I went ahead and did by grade level just because I thought it was interesting, right? So again, every one of these questions, I can drop down by grade level, race, ethnicity, by school. And this, it's kind of hard to see this as ninth, 10th, 11th and 12th. So these are the aspirations in, of ninth graders. Our ninth graders responded, this many want to join the military, work full-time, 10-two-year, a 10-four-year and so on. This is the 10th grade pattern of response, the 11th grade and the 12th grade pattern of response, which I think is incredibly powerful, right? Interestingly enough, these patterns of response also match our National Clearinghouse data. So remember where I showed that to you? And we had this past fall, 57% show up at a post-secondary institution, including a two-year institution, right? So these patterns are actually matching what we're seeing in post-secondary enrollment.
If they have a plan, they're doing it, but...
Right. But then also the decreasing of aspiration is kind of interesting as well. And so again, need stuff to look at, really understanding where we're meeting student needs. We right now have our career class in ninth grade. And so that's something that we definitely need to look at and keep discussing more. It's been something that's been on our radar. But the flip side, if we move it higher, then the students are making poor decisions here that impact their potential outcome here, which is why we keep going back and forth on it. It's one of those things that we wrestle with.
But with the advent of on-the-job training, with the advent of a lot of programs that we have now, could give them more of an opportunity at a higher level to understand conceptually what some of those career paths are.
For sure. There's pluses and minuses in all directions. I agree. The risk to it being higher is the students not realizing their risk to bright futures, the risk to some of the other opportunities, had they taken this course or that course or GPA. So back to, I have an idea that I'm working on with Eastern Florida that would help these guys right here do exactly what you're thinking about.
I just, in every year that I ever saw it being taught, there was a lot of time that was spent talking to the kids about career paths and stuff like that in which it was very, it was very high level for them to understand and try to make those decisions.
Yeah, I agree.
They weren't even old enough to take jobs inside the community to try to see what careers they may want to take.
I agree. We got a lot of student comments on that topic. So I agree. And it's definitely something we'll be looking at in our division as well. Moving on to high school student safety. And interesting, by and large, they feel safer than students in the younger grades.
How can they feel so safe in the neighborhood they live in if violence and crime is keeping them from being successful?
It's an odd phenomenon, teenagers. It's an odd phenomenon. Again, I like this. There are clear rules against hurting people. This is a very strong affirmative response. Adults at my school try to stop bullying and harassment, although I love more of this here. It's a nominal negative response. And again, our biggest vulnerability within school is always bathrooms and locker rooms. There's some additional questions that even talk about, you know, bus stops and things like that. You know, our goal in all of this is student voice to help drive change, right? That with all of the knowledge we have, with all of our best intentions, if we don't continually connect to the students and our care, it's kind of like that principal I talked to, I'm doing this, I'm doing this, I'm doing this, I'm doing this, I'm doing this. And the students are saying, I don't know anything. And so the principal's frustrated because he's doing, 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 doing. But the students are frustrated because they don't know anything. And it's just really important for us to stay connected in how students receive information, how students respond to information and what makes them connect with what we're giving them and not failing to ask that question, right? And figuring out, so as a principal, there are some additional guidelines in here on how to lead discussion groups with your students, how to lead discussions with your school advisory council. Again, this isn't just a one-time set of data. It includes an enormous amount of resources to help use it to drive change. Lots of research studies and programs, information from exemplary districts throughout the country that have really utilized the information to help improve student outcomes. Because I think we're missing things. I think we're doing a whole lot of work as big people. And from a big people perspective, makes sense, but it's not connecting to the kids. And we have to figure out how to accelerate and amplify results by connecting to students better and getting a little bit more leverage. And so I hope that you all were interested in this data. Know that, like I said, we've already had preliminary conversations with our school leaders. They're getting extensive training on March 5th. You're welcome to Swing by Coco High School if you'd like. It's from Lena Weibel.
Eight to 12.
Eight to 12 is a Coco High School opportunity. Youth Truth is sending folks out to show them all of the ways to now take this data and use it. I will be out of town, but Lena will be there and Jane will be there. And you're welcome to come by. March 5th? Okay.
Oh, yeah, I was thinking that date was on my list.
Okay, sorry. But know that they're going to be getting a lot of support. And how do you make sense of this? This is... of this? This is a national group, they have dealt with all of our questions, like Ms. Duskovich's, but they said this, but they said that. That's why we want to learn from them. And learn, what's the right thing to sort of push on, what should you push on, and how do you really get your faculty and staff and your parents and community on board in utilizing this data. I have to give a public thanks to Lena before I'm done. Lena has really embraced that single little line, all duties as assigned. And this was entirely Lena's project, I literally turned it over to her and said, I finally got approval, I'll handle it. And then she worked with all the schools in the district, worked with the company, and has been facilitating our success in this. And if it was up to me by myself, that wouldn't have happened. So thank you, Lena. And I'm excited, lots of other divisions were eager to have this data and jump on it, and I think are also sending people to train me. I think when we talk about our social emotional goal, social emotional learning, there are metrics here, right? So, at first, we were reluctant on how many, how we can measure things, we can measure things here. And we can look at cohorts of students, right? So we can look at these students as eighth graders responded this way, this is how they're responding as ninth graders additionally. And so, we're really excited, and I'm looking forward to making this a habit of using student voice in our decision-making. So thank you.
I'm really glad that we decided to go with this company and this survey.
Especially with the toolbox, I didn't know that we were going to have that.
Oh, there's so much. I went down like deep dark rap holes. There was so much information there.
It's unreal.
It really does complete, you know, the data sphere for our schools, because we have this with our student voice, we have the insight teacher survey, we have the insight administrator survey, and of course, we have our student achievement department's monitoring data.
And our parents survey.
And our parents survey, thank you. So we can begin to really triangulate, and in this era of more and more and more to do with less, we can, our leaders can really begin to hone and focus their efforts.
In the secondary surveys, the students self-respondered their grades, right? So if you have these A students, and they're telling you like some hardcore facts, when you look at their patterns, like, that is interesting. We had just assumed negativity with a certain profile, but it allows us to see how each type of student responds. So we're excited about that as well, and driving a strategic plan. We've already talked about how it will assist them in their school program plans, and again, complete the puzzle.
And moving into accreditation next year, we'll be able to use this data.
Yeah, Lena just discovered something new, we're up for our district accreditation, and in the past when we did it, we had to stop what we were doing and utilize their survey tools. This year, because we're using Youth Truth, because we're using insight survey, we do not have to use their surveys, we can continue to use our surveys and continue to track data. I can remember as a principal last time, having to stop everything we were doing and use these cumbersome surveys that really didn't drive our work. So they recognized already, lovely Lena's on that team too, so you need all the duties as assigned. And now, we can continue to use our tools to monitor.
I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just, we're hoping to do the survey in like November.
Thank you. We did it in January this year simply by like the delay in approval process between contracting, getting on the board agenda. We think November's a really nice sweet spot, students have been in school for a little while. This was, our schools had a lot going on, they had the insight survey, they had the sex, drugs, and rock and roll survey from.
It's not the official title.
The Florida Department of Education, the Florida DOE one, and they, they had a lot. So we're going to move the survey to November, and the other years which the principals were all a guess, thank you, anything but January.
I wanted to say, it's amazing that you guys are pushing to get this much of a student voice, but I also wanted to say thank you because a lot of the metrics that we can be proud of inside that survey are because of the people that are in this room. And you guys deserve all the credit in the world, I know you guys work so hard in everything you do, but when you look at that kind of data inside of our face from our own students, that's something to be proud of. And I think that you guys all deserve a huge, you know, pat on the back for that, and thank you for focusing all of the energy in the appropriate places. I told Dr. Mullins, I said, you know, we need to stop taking the brunt of what the community can help us with. And when you spoke about leveraging our 501(c)(3) season a higher amount, I think that that's an amazing, you know, huge opportunity with HUD and some of the coordinating agencies that Ms. Hand and I have spoken about in the past as far as helping out with some of the things, I think that that's a great thing. But I think overall, I just want to take a minute and say thanks, because the stuff that we see there is.
We appreciate it, and we simply represent school staff. It is truly the teachers, the front desk clerks, the admin, just really, we just get to stand here and represent them, but they're the ones that take it seriously. And I think, district-wide, I would say that people really understand more, the little things can make a big difference, and that we have to capitalize on that more because we're never going to get big solutions, right? But the little things can really get us a lot of momentum and positivity, and put people in an environment where they want to succeed, and we think that's important. And it's the school staff, I know Jane would say the same thing, we're just, we get to be the ones to stand here, but they're making the magic happen with everything we keep throwing at them, so thank you.
Well, and I feel like a lot of, you know, when I think about this survey compared to the all the data that you're going to, there's a lot of, what I'm seeing here is a lot of, we're doing good work, but maybe the students don't always understand the why behind it, and that's where the connection is, they're not understanding, you know, all the lists, if you said their principals were doing this and this, but they're not connecting it to why it's being done. So maybe it's not necessarily changing the work that our schools are doing, but, you know, my kids want to know why I made the decision I'm making, especially with the secondary schools, you know, they just, they need to know, and then that aha moment of, oh, you know, so the connection is there, maybe they still understand the why behind it.
Thank you. And please do take Jane and I up on it, if you want to look at the data more deeply and more specific to schools and groups, we'd be happy to sit with you and talk your ear off and show you all the different patterns that you can see. And in fact, Lena can, and any, all the directors actually can access it as well, if we're hard to get, we'll be happy to sit down and show it to you. So thank you.
Thank you. Awesome information.
It really is.
Yeah. And ironically, Dr. Mullins and I, this morning, we were at Astronaut High School for a meeting with the Titusville Chamber Board, they came to tour the school, which was a great visit. And then the chamber board members actually went out to the classrooms and toured the school a little bit during Astro Hour. And Dr. Mullins and I stayed in the media center, and their student government, students from all grade levels came in to talk to us.
Ah, fun.
And several of the things that you mentioned as opportunities for development in this survey were things that actually were brought up by the students while we were there.
Yeah.
It was days day, one of the, one of the young ladies said, you know, we really need help getting ready for like after high school. And I said, I know you do. And it was really cool, because I was able to validate the survey they had just taken, and I said, the only reason I know that is because we listen to your voice. And we're meeting this afternoon to look at it, and you could see them kind of like, oh, they're actually going to take it serious.
Exactly, feedback from the students from Palm Bay High too, was they felt like there wasn't enough help to help, like, they were like, oh, I was a senior before I realized I needed to have this or that.
And, and they, I mean, to be frank, there isn't enough help. We've got school counselors at, I don't have to tell you the ratio they're at, and if you imagine the last two to three years, what we've added in the scope of school safety, mental health support, all things are really important and not separate, it's just a matter of numbers. Like, there, there isn't enough time in the day, there isn't enough help for things that everybody wants to do it. Every, every school person wants to do more of this, that, this, and that, there's just literally so many human beings and so many hours in the day. So we have to get smarter, think differently about how to amplify some results, given what we know is true.
Yeah, if you can't do the basics, then you can't do the high lofty goals, you have to focus on those.
Well, and opening up the resources to students, they can search around, you know, making them available so they know where to go.
And again, I think.
A lot of them are the kind of kids who would get in there and find it themselves, they just don't know where to start.
I think nonprofits is a huge connection, and a lot of districts throughout the country, there's a lot of nonprofit work on college and career readiness and college access, and I can't magic line that, but I'm just, I believe we need to help our schools do what they want to be doing in supporting kids.
Career Source was at the last Titusville Chamber Education Committee meeting and indicated that they have some funding to do some work around supporting FAFSA.
We work with them on that, yeah. And they work with Paula on, we have a, we have a couple of FAFSA grants on, one in Palm Bay, it's based on like census data, and information on certain tracks, so we were able to get some funding for Palm Bay. But Paula does work with Career Source, and they are a tremendous resource. And with several of our cities, they run those summer jobs programs that are also huge because they teach the kids the soft skills, they employ the students, and teach them a lot about workforce. So yes, we will continue to leverage our work with Career Source. Another one that we have found to be positive is Goodwill. And so Goodwill does a lot in student development and training as well. So just started to tap into some of what they have available in supporting students also, so.
Very cool. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any additional board members have comments, questions, concerns? All right, then hearing no further business, this meeting is now adjourned. Hey, guys, a couple hours.